Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve Holmes is with us tonight from Bethany Church.
Please let us pray. O God, of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our community. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders that people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, O God, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as people of faith, confident in your goodness and love through Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Opportunity for public input at this time. I have two that would ask to speak, Joe.
Is he here or do you want me to have him?
Please go up to the podium if you'd like to hear him.
I have two issues tonight. First, let me tell you, it's historic. I was called this weekend and then went over to Mobile Home on the Mobile Home Park over there by across from the school. It seems after talking to the renter that the person you guys vouched asked to leave or whatever hours you guys said, in October 5th meeting, I believe I was there, his cats, which are more than 20-plus kittens, went underneath her mobile home, poured down the duck work. And I talked to Jerry today and they, her liquor bill was $547.
$457.
$457, right number one. Anyway, which should have been less than half of that. Anyway, the pet lung abs. I talked to Tim, Officer Bourbon, last night and he said he'd have an officer go by and then he was there. The renter told, uh, two renters told me he never left from that October 6th meeting. Whether you guys want to start putting him up in a motel room or whatever, but I wish you'd take the next step. And whatever your resolution was. The second thing is the cats. A gentleman tried to trap them before, before there were 20-plus kittens and he, uh, somebody would let them go as soon as he caught them. I put traps out and I don't, around, today I got some. But I put them where out of sight and I'm not going to be able to catch all 20 if I put them a block away. Basically still in the park but out of sight, you know, between the home and the river. Where I saw traps. Anyway, I ask your help. I understand there's a, some kind of ordinance that had to do with cats as far as how many you can have, as far as a kennel or something like that. And I believe 20 seeds that number plus kittens that are at least a month old, she said. Anyway, I'd like you to address those two issues.
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you. Will those be referred to?
Yes.
Refer, will refer again to Chief Burden, Joe.
Larry, you're up. Thank you, good evening. I'm Larry Van Rigg, Administrator at Linsburg Community Hospital. And my purpose is to discuss the 2015 sales tax complication regarding the LCH bond debt. And first and foremost, I want to thank all of you for this past year's financial support of payment on the LCH bond debt. Continuation of allocation of sales tax dollars since the 2010 ballot initiative has enabled LCH to continue to use dollars in other areas of need. Those areas include staffing, capital improvements, equipment replacement, and service expansion. This has all led to improved service to people in our community and has strengthened the quality of the healthcare we can provide. We also feel that this not only helps the physical health of the community, but also working with healthcare services as a provider and as an employer helps the financial health of the community. Linsburg voters expressed their understanding of these benefits with their votes in 2000 and again in 2010. Then this past year also saw, we saw the passage of a Cali-wide sales tax that will also benefit LCH. It was an awkward ballot initiative and one we struggled to support as we do not want to hurt the economic energy of Linsburg by further increasing the sales tax, especially since we took part in campaigning with city leaders in the sales tax initiatives of 2010. Nevertheless, the ballot measure passed and it will provide financial resources to assist us over the next 10 years starting April 1st. We don't have a specified purpose for the dollars at this time, but I assure you that it will be safe for further capital improvements of property or equipment or used in a way that will further benefit the patients and communities that we serve. I understand that the city staff has made a recommendation to you for your consideration. That recommendation will provide the bridge on the bond interest payments until the county sales tax receipts are received by LCH. The assumption will be that once the county tax dollars are received by LCH, then we would take over payments on the bond. I hope that recommendation would meet your approval and I hope it could be a win-win for the city of Linsburg and for LCH. As dollars historically allocated for the bond debt relief will now be available to meet other needs of Linsburg. I know there hasn't been total agreement around this bond issue. There are those who disagreed with the ballot initiative in 2010. Some have disagreed with our continued receipt of allocation of the dollars or of other decisions made. Some even feel that the city should continue to pay on the bond debt even after this year. In the end, I hope all will be able to look back and see how the partnership between the city of Linsburg and Linsburg Community Hospital has been beneficial to strengthen both entities. I know I feel that way about it and I thank you for your consideration in years past and your consideration for the recommendation tonight.
Thank you, Larry. Any others for public input at this time?
No questions.
Come on up, go.
My adult, actually one of the 343 North Campus, and that's the reason I'm here. I'm trying to figure out if there's some kind of dog ordinance that can be pushed on people. Loose dogs all the time, number nine and number two. I own number two and they're my renters. I've explained to them that there should be a leash policy in the state. However, it's not my property, it's Dan and my dean's home court, so I can't tell them what to do. And there you are. The number nine animal continues to, they just open the door and it runs everywhere and terrorizes the next door neighbors and tries to come after and snaps at them. I just would hate for my picture old daughter hit by one of these dogs. I just don't know what we can do besides, I don't know what I can do anymore to impress upon them that they need to keep their dog on a leash.
Okay.
If there's any ideas you guys have or I could really use your, to help with it.
Appreciate it, Milan, interesting. And I don't know if you've talked to Chief Burden or not, but we can refer to Chief and look to, you know, what our ordinance is allowed and that and what we need to be doing. So appreciate you coming forward, don't bring it into our attention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you much. Any others for public input at this time? Amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, let's move to the approval item number five, approval of December 1st and December 30th council meetings, your desire.
President, approval.
Second.
Moving to seconded, any discussion on the approval of the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item number six, appointments, Holly, would you come forward please? There's a CBD appointment.
Lauren Bunk and Raffles here tonight and has agreed to serve a term on the CBD board and she was approved tonight. Lauren is a graduate of Bethany College and a recent graduate and decided to come back to the Linsburg community because she did love Linsburg. Has purchased into a business in our downtown. She's the owner of the White Pinkop right now and has done a wonderful job with that. We thought that Lauren would bring a very young mentality to our board and some young ideas and some innovative ideas and we thought she was a positive person to add to our, to our group. We're bringing her before you tonight for approval.
Is this a full term or is it a?
This is a partial term. It's a little, a partial term, yeah.
Okay. Moving to seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Welcome, Lauren. Thank you for being a part of the CBD force. We look forward to your participation in that. Mayors report in January meetings. I want to highlight the moving forward meeting on the 21st. It's a dinner and discussion meeting started at 5:30 with several partners of dinner eaten. Please all make sure that council members, you have that on your agenda for this coming month.
What page is this?
May 21st at 5:30. Yeah, thank you. The committee meetings are the 20th and the 22nd that week, so it'll be a busy week for everybody. And please look forward to the February 4th city hall day at the Capitol. As we just heard, our representative talking about things that are going on, number one, budget for all of us. And I think any, anybody that didn't be there that day and visit with our legislature leaders would be welcome on our part to make sure that our concerns are, for them, provided. That's all I have, moving on, planning and zoning. Nothing?
Well, the minutes of the packet, there's nothing brought forward for action at this time. We put some appearance guidelines on Paris Cole, the C3 district, I guess is a better way to say it.
Any questions without P and Z from the minutes that you read?
So is, this is just part of their process and this is kind of an update for us and the next step will be to?
The next step is depending on the outcome of the process with planning zoning, if they recommend changes, there would be a public notice along with a public hearing. Any change in zoning ordinance requires a public hearing. And upon completion of the public hearing, the zoning commission would take action and based upon that action would then, if it's in the affirmative, would come forward to city councils for consideration.
And is this the extent of the changes that we're seeing now? And are they looking for input from us or like have they just?
This is just an update. I mean, every other committee we have for the city when they meet, the minutes are included as part of the packet.
Additional questions on P and Z? Hearing none, let's move on to item number eight, committee reports. We'll start with administration and finance.
All right, the first thing is the employee wellness program having been worked on by Cassie and.
Cassie and Kate.
You want to add that one please?
So I think it was August we started talking about implementing a wellness program for all city, full-time city employees here. I think we have 30 total employees and of that, we had 22 who said they would be interested in signing up and participating in it as it would be a completely optional program for everyone. And with that, we kind of had to determine what kind of program we wanted to administer to everyone and then as well as researching some third-party organizations that can kind of come in, help us facilitate it, administrate it as the sole people that collect all the data that is received within the program so that it remains anonymous and that we just do overall calculation of our progress kind of throughout the whole program. The two parties that we met with individually were fee insurance as well as common care. And one we are favoring right now would be common care. They have a pretty decent program. They do a little health or assessment upfront. They basically take the BMI and steer central vitals so that we have starting figures when you start out the program they go from and then see how you improve from that.
And then the program, the results will be presented to us.
And then with that, we wanted to also purchase the Fitbit wristbands. It's just a bracelet you can wear all day. You can wear it while you're sleeping as well and it can track your sleep activity. But during the day, it has the ability to track your hours, how many steps you're burning. Some of them also include your heart rate throughout the day as well. And so.
We've also talked to Greg and there's incentives with this program. So everybody that is involved in the program, if they need 12,000 steps a day or 70,000 steps to be capable of they, you know, perform correctly, if they meet all those goals, then they're eligible for incentive, which is $25 every quarter. So it's up to $200 per, per queen. If low, then it's $100. So if they meet all four quarter goals, then they get $100 plus that $100, $100 for making all their goals.
And with common care as well, the main difference between common care and fee was with the, we would have to go through our own insurance. They go to the C, go to your doctor's and get a physical done prior to starting the program. With common care, they actually have a group of individuals from their staff that can actually come here, do whatever tests they want to have done as part of the program and that's it. And they're also already, they would want to make sure any employee that's part of taking in the program is up to date on their qualifications.
Questions? Great, funding for this program comes from, what do you call it?
Yes, from our 2013 health insurance premiums. We were with Starmark due to utilization and under the Affordable Care Act, they had to rebate $6,000 to the city of our premiums paid. Additionally, in our HRA account, health reimbursement account that the city manages, we, the utilization has been lower than what we budgeted for. I will finish this year and I can't remember, I forgot to look at it today before I came to this meeting. We were at about $72,000 in that account going into the coming year. And that was, that was actually with November's number. So we should be well over $80,000 in the health reimbursement account going into 2015.
Okay, I want to make a motion, we do approve this new program with common care. The amount had requested was $9,100. That is a motion.
Second?
It's been moved in seconded. Further discussion?
This is to begin with. This is awesome.
Reorder does it get tonight?
If I'm understanding this correctly, while there are no guarantees, this should help us further reduce our utilization theoretically as well because we have healthier employees and could possibly even help our work comp.
Yes, well, not necessarily work, well, it could help work comp. It would help productivity, help, help employee health, general well-being, help us on our health insurance agreement. The example is for this coming year, first premium notice we received showed 20%, 26% premium increase. Went back to our umbrella provider and said, we don't want to be lumped in with your whole coverage, but judged as a, as a single group, but we get additional 6% knocked off that just based upon our experience. A lot of those, the rest of the increase was just industry-wide. It only grew up 20% in the years. And from 2014 to 2015, it's pretty significant at this point in time with health insurance. When I say significantly, significantly positive that it was that level.
Okay, additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Becky? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you ladies, for your run on. On that.
The next item is the sunscreen confidence center assistant job description. We've had a lot of discussion about this. As I'm reading the notes here. We have not received anything more. Holly? Karen, that we've received anything more on some of the questions that we've asked about sales versus administration.
I was asked for a sales plan and after Christmas break, this is my first day of balance, so I didn't have a chance to work on that.
Okay, then how do we, like I say, let's just scale this. I don't think we were ready to make this too soon. And it, there were just a lot of, a lot of questions that were brought up that morning at Canadian or some of the sponsor. Wayne, what do you have?
Well, I think they were probably a good idea because I agree there was a lot of question. I'm not convinced in my mind either of what new position we'll entail, what the responsibilities will be. And while there are some things that are obvious about the number of hours currently being spent, I don't think anybody, you know, doesn't agree that that is the case. But the question is, how do we resolve that in a new position? What are they going to do exactly?
Is that a motion to table? There is a motion, table or there's no motion, but just to refer it back to committee or continue setting.
Thank you. All right.
All right. The next item is the hospital bond payment. The question is?
Hearing the January council meeting.
We have to reauthorize that. And in line with Larry, hospital administrator, said just now. The plan is that we will pay up until they start receiving money.
Well, currently right now, we have, let me find it here at the exact time right. There's $9,924 in the hospital fund bond and interest account. And April 1st this year, it's a interest-only payment on that bond of $5,615. And then October 1st is a bond and interest or principal and interest payment of $55,615. The recommendation is that you, out of the $9,924 and 40 cents, you go ahead and use that to pay principal and interest in April.
In April.
In April, yes. And then in October is to use the balance, um, where is it? Use the balance of what's in the fund along with sales tax revenue that has gone to Linsburg Community Hospital to, and that's calculated at $51,306 to make that final October 1 payment.
All right. I hope we just do that.
So Becky, if you're about to pay, you spend $5,615 to pay the either of the insurance interest?
Yes.
I'm thinking that's what you're saying. Everybody, is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
My discussion still is the same as each year for the gentlemen who are here. And that is, we keep paying out money for this hospital which the city has no representation on this committee. It's a private foundation that makes appointments to the health, to the council that runs the hospital. We pay this big bill and have no representation on whatsoever until such time as that board says we'd like to have some input from someone specifically appointed or elected from the city council while we both do.
Okay. Any other?
I guess I would just like to say that should remind us maybe that up until two years ago, the hospital was represented by then-mayor Judy Newshaker. Ken Branch was a council member and also a member of the hospital board. And Larry or Chuck?
Point taken.
I know where it is at, but they were not appointed or elected by the city council. And to me, that's an entirely different thing. They were coming from a different base.
Further discussion about the motion on the floor to spend your $5,615 in April for the debt interest payment.
I guess I have a question. Is the amount that is in the account called the hospital, the bond and interest hospital fund, is that the, is that the balance of the monies that were designated in January a year ago? Or how did this money come to be in this account designated for this action?
I can address that.
Please step up to the mic.
Yes. Historically, I've been asking to allocate $60,000 in sales tax each year. The bond payments have been slightly above or slightly lower. Just in order to make a swift transition, I had to calculate if we continued $60,000 a year by the time the bond payments were finished, there would be a sufficient funds to cover that. So there are carryover funds from when the bond payments were lower, so.
So it's fair to say that this money has been designated for this purpose?
They were designated in prior years to pay sales tax on the, the hospital bond. So whatever funds are in there, that's my understanding, those would go towards the bond payment in the hospital. If nothing was allocated this year, would pay the difference.
So is that then what prompted the recommendation from staff?
Yes, we still have to encumber the money. Even if it's there, it doesn't mean it's being spent.
Every year we have to.
We, yeah, every year we have to. I mean, the fund can have a positive balance, but until that money's encumbered, it's not obligated towards anything.
Right, so we could go with just the April payment or we could just say, what, the funds that are in there right now, allocate that towards the bond payments for this year. And then you wouldn't have to address it twice.
The motion on the floor is for $5,615 to be paid towards the interest on April 1st, 2015. Any further discussion, reference this motion. Hearing none, roll call please.
Becky?
Yes.
David?
No.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Sam Sodden is the world's compensation man.
Page sixty-one.
Mount Billings, $41,000, the actual dollars that are being requested by $37,375, that is in motion.
That motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to expenditure $37,375 with KMIT. Any further discussion?
I would like to point out two items, and when you actually look at the premium notice, if you look at the experience mod or the experience modifier, we are now below one, which means we are performing above average from a safety standpoint in claims experience, which allows us to get a deduction from the estimated premium of $49,886. Additionally, based upon our experience, and we're participating in Kansas Municipal Insurance Trust, which is a pool of cities that self-insure for comp, we're getting an additional eight percent discount because of our experience.
Twenty-one is a great number, and that shows good things are happening with safety and all that. Thank you to staff and everybody that makes that happen for us. Additional discussion? Roll call please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Thank you, Becky. Utilities committee, any others?
Okay, this first item on the utilities committee is a discussion of a quote from Meyer Specialty Services for the 2015 sewer line cleaning program. If you have some other questions for Tim, we're requesting $8,000, of which $9,000 has been budgeted. And he's talking about combining here 2014 and 2015's budget so that they can do a little bit more. Is that correct, Tim?
Yes, with a ten cent per linear foot savings.
Yes.
Getting additionally done.
So I move that we approve the eight thousand, no more than $8,000 request for Meyer Specialties' bid for this sewer line cleaning.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, further discussion?
Is this the same organization as the last, this before that made it sound familiar?
In the past, it was a different company. We used Meyer for probably five or six years.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion beyond the fact that we use them for a couple of years now?
When would they plan on doing this work, do you know?
Probably about March.
Any additional discussion? Roll call please.
Becky?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Next is the bid from Wees Tree Trimming for the 2015 tree trimming program. And the section two of an area of town that's delineated here. New this year is a requirement to grind all stumps that are four inches in diameter or greater from trees that are reed. We've had, Wees do this the last few years. In fact, Siena Tree has declined to even make a bid this year. So I'm moving that we approve the amount of his bid for $11,000 for the 2015 tree trimming program.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded into expenditure $11,000 with Wees Tree Trimming. A quick question that I have, Tim, is how will we notify everybody in section two that we're going to be trimming the trees? How will that be done? Treating their alley trees?
We usually paper utipus notification in.
Some kind of map or something that shows that?
We can do that.
Okay. If it's a large item or that, and there were...
I'm sorry.
If it's a large item or close to a fence or something else, can we individually address that with the person then at that time?
Yes, we do.
To try and achieve our goal of getting it out of the tree line and also their goal of protecting their property?
If it would lend itself to the situation, we talk to the homeowner and try to get permission to remove a tree rather than just trim it year after year.
Okay.
Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. That's why I always budget a little more than we can, just in case I get the opportunity to take trees.
What do you think this program has saved us over the years? And I have no idea, but...
Just look at other towns that don't trim and how many other, you know, we're out of these are from squirrels, we fix those pretty quick. We don't have many for trees.
Okay. Additional questions?
And I think, I think your crew does a very good job of trying to notify the people and tell them that they're in their yard and this and that, so I certainly have an interest in that.
He said yard. Now, again, this is strictly along the alley. These are not anything across the yard or anywhere else. Is that across the...
Oh, sometimes we have to get indoors in order to trim back the ten feet from the line.
Sure. But the service lines of the house is not part of the trimming?
Not part of this, not. We sometimes do that when we have to or need to, but we'll have to get on people's property in order to pick up when it's bad.
This is the second year for Wees to do this, second or third? And is the, is his bid this year pretty much in keeping with what it's been in the past? I mean, other than maybe a slight improvement?
Well, it's significantly higher because of the stump...
Because of the scope? Oh, because of the stump breaking?
That's why it's higher. That's probably a $4,500 add.
Glad to be utilizing local business.
Yep.
And he also brings with him the certificates of training and all after working around.
Yes, I had a discussion with him last week, he's all perfect.
Okay.
Why did we decide to take grind stumps instead of just treat them?
Because we were having complaints from homeowners.
For easy chemical?
Well, just for leaving the stuff, even though it's treated and didn't grow again, you still have the stuff.
Additional questions? I think good upfront PR work on section two of the community is definitely more than, please make sure that happens, so.
I'll point out, we've had almost zero complaints.
I understand, I just...
I mean, that's, I'd say we'll get fifty this time.
Sure, sure.
We've had to do a lot of that.
The more we talk about it, the more people don't know, so.
Yeah.
Might just stay there because there are many questions again, so. Hearing no further discussion, roll call please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Excuse me, Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
The third item on utilities committee is we've approved an arc flash study for the electrical system in the past. Will you go ahead with this so I don't screw it up?
Sure. When we were discussing the arc flash study with the engineer Mike Schmader, it became part of the discussion that some of our fusing probably was the wrong size for its location. And by that, I mean, you start at the substation and they, with a heavy breaker, and you work your way out through the system with a lighter, 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 so that when you're out on the north end of town and a squirrel hits a breaker, it's supposed to pop up there at the first break right there, and it's going to travel it all back to the, way back to the substation and taking the whole circuit out. Over the years, in the middle of the night, storms, inexperienced people grabbing fuses, we've, we've just got a multitude of incorrect fuses in the system. So Mike will start at the substation, determine what fuse load should be for each segment through each circuit, and then we'll go through it and make, make sure they're the right ones.
This down the road should mean a, an improvement in the service from the city, especially in terms of fuses popping, et cetera.
Yeah, when a fuse goes, when there's an incident, it will be more localized instead of circuitized.
I would move that we approve this $2,520 to have this mid-states energy perform the fuse coordination study.
Second.
Any other questions?
Yes. Is this then what has probably been primarily responsible for the frequent outages specifically in the southeast part of town? Northeast?
Not specifically, no.
Not specifically?
We...
Generally?
An outage is still going to happen when it occurs, we will be able to localize it.
If it colds, it's sweeping all the way to the substation, knocking out...
Yes, right. We will localize it to where there won't be as much testing. And when a squirrel shorts out, the squirrel shorts out.
Can this, this study will be done right?
Immediately. He wanted to start on already, and I told him I didn't see that.
Tim, is this something that will be put on your GPS map then, so that, you know, when they do go out and they get all that night or whatever, they could go right to the map and say, well, that's two fifty fuses and let's take that with us and that...
Well, it's something that can be added, yes, it's not part of this.
No, but it would be something that I think could help us in the future to continue to clean.
Good thing to have this.
Yeah.
That was my question, that way in five or 10 years...
You don't have to have a study yet.
Yeah.
And have you considered implying a squirrel whisperer to see whether we could get...
Are you applying?
Is there a neighbor whisperer? So will that be, will you read back your summer bid to get that on the GPS? I think that's a great thing that needs to happen, that we're using that more.
We would probably try to do that in-house.
Okay, great. We'll check back when we can make sure that happens.
Next week.
Yes, we can do that in-house.
Great, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Becky?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
David, any others? No others, but I know. Let's move to streets and parks committee.
First item is the bleacher board replacement. This is the final phase of a career project to replace the bleacher seats. And the recommendation was to spend $4,459.24 with Kansas Contract Design. And that is motion.
Been moved, do we have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, further discussion?
I just have to pose a question. Are these the portable bleachers or where are these bleachers? I guess I have no...
These are the portable bleachers, and we're putting the metal, replacing the wood on the bridges and making it all metal.
The ones we used during...
Kelly's last, yes.
And this comes from special cars, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Hearing, is this both large and small ones in? Bleachers?
The final phase is the three small remaining bleachers that have not been skinned. We've done all of the large ones already. We saw that at, well, Nitsom, I believe. We just have the three left.
Three left, and this will take care of all we have.
Yes.
Okay. Further discussion? Roll call please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
How many bleachers do we have?
Four and four, I believe. Is that right?
Four?
Four small, four large. Do we have done?
I'm sorry, I was reading what?
Four large, four small bleachers, I believe. Eight. And we bid this in three years, not four.
Okay. Might stay there for the rest of it. Any other, sir?
Next item was the request to purchase a truck for parks. This would be a 2015 Parks Capital Improvement. Recommendation is for $18,022.28 from Long MacArthur Ford. That is motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
One second.
Been moved and seconded, further discussion? Questions for Eric?
Does this replace the existing?
Yes, and it's an old one.
Yeah. Do we trade that in?
We're trading it in for what it's worth.
Don't we get the whole lot?
No, it's not the whole lot. We're trading in a 2000 F-15 duty truck that, I don't believe it ran today, but I think Kevin had borrowed a wreck truck.
Okay.
Looking forward to it.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Becky?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
The next item is the Old Mill Bridge Agreement, and I'm going to go to Greg for this just to give us some details on where we are on this.
This agreement has been negotiated with McPherson County Board of County Commissioners and Public Works Department that lays out the responsibility of the city and the county when it comes to the Old Mill Bridge. It will no longer be open to vehicle traffic, but for pedestrian and bicyclists only due to the inspection that it wants for greater than 2.4 tons. County will install ballards at each end. We will do maintenance on the bridge. When I say maintenance, snow removal, and then repairs or maintenance, other types of structural maintenance on the bridge would be cost shared at 50/50, and both parties have to agree to the maintenance. If both parties don't agree, the party that thinks maintenance needs to be done can still proceed with it, but then they would bear 100% of the cost.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Old Mill Bridge Agreement with McPherson County.
I'll second that. Moving seconded, further discussion?
I can't see great why this is a good deal for the city. I mean, as opposed to what we have now.
As, well, one of, one of the things is we keep it open to any type of traffic. The...
Because they threatened to close it to everything?
Yes.
Or remove it?
I mean, yeah.
Previous drafts had areas of concern for you, have those been believed in?
Yes, yes, we've gone back and forth several times on this agreement, and both parties can have a agreed principle to what you have in front of you.
Does, does the law say now that they have to be inspected yearly?
Not if it's not a vehicular bridge.
Just, so a walking bridge?
I mean, it'll still be, I get a visual inspection, but if it's a open for vehicular traffic, because of the type of bridge that it is, it takes a special piece of equipment that you can actually get up and has an arm that gets back underneath where you can...
That does not need, that was about $35,000 or something?
Yeah.
Okay, that does not...
That does not need to be done.
That, does an inspection have to be done even though it's just a walking bridge?
I'm going to answer your question this way, there's no legal requirement if an inspection is done.
Question I have is the areas surrounding the bridge or directly adjacent to it, there's a lot of trees growing up very close to the base of it, and kind of, I mean, eventually you're going to kind of grow into the bridge itself. Who's responsible? Whose responsibility is it to maintain that and kind of, that's still part of this, this agreement?
Still, yeah, I think the agreement is part of the 50/50.
Bill, you put your legalese on this, I'm going to.
Uh, let me put it this way, this is a lot more valuable than the first draft that they had.
Additional questions around the room?
So, in light of Rick's question, will this be on the agenda for streets and parks to?
To.
The trees growing under the bridge?
I hope so, yes. That's kind of why I brought it up now.
Yeah, but I don't agree with that.
You don't know?
Yeah.
No, it's in your personal.
Winter work, winter work, excuse me.
Winter?
Winter work.
Oh, not the actual winter.
He's shaking his head for winter work. So, we'll put it on, uh, hearing, can you write back the report with us when you see it? Let us know what you're seeing there, what needs to be trimmed and that, so.
Actually, uh, the county's done quite a bit of trimming Old Mill Park Campground and around the bridge already, so we've got a head start.
Treat stumps or grind them?
They won't last, they'll grow back.
Treat the stumps? Could we treat the stumps again?
Uh, they cut them at grade, they do non-grinding, though.
But at least freedom until the next round of flood brings in the new crop, so. You'll let us know though you'll do some visual checks on that break if you can.
I, I already do, yes.
Okay, thank you for your question. How about that? All right, further discussion around the room? Do you need roll call on this? She's shaking her head yes, so roll call please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
No others?
Public Safety Committee?
Up for consideration is the replacement of the second monitor in, uh, since what? Did we do the first one late summer? Early fall?
Early fall.
Um, the, um, heart monitor. We have a quote from Phillips Health Care, uh, a best price of $2,390, that includes the blood pressure cuffs, that QCPR, and two-year bench warranty. It would also take our old monitor and tray for $3,500, making the total $16,890. The motion is to approve purchases six, the amount of $16,890 to replace a monitor in one of our ambulances.
Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
And did we actually, it took us a long time to get the first one, didn't it? We still have not received it. I was going to say, I didn't know we got the first one yet, so. Or gave the loader back, and we have another one. Oh.
So what's the holdup?
I, I'm not sure. But we're willing to buy from them again, even though we haven't gotten them.
Could you give us a picture of us holding their monitor on the top of the Senate Building?
They are reputable.
Yes.
Is that it?
Yeah, it's the same company that we also received the ADs on, so they're bad at all of those, which is nice.
Okay.
Uh, from the monitors that we have currently, that we want bad, uh, to buy that same monitor from that company, they start at $40,000, so this is what we would be across.
But you don't have a timeframe on getting monitor number one yet.
No.
Do they come together?
I doubt it. I'd have to get the first one first.
How long are you going to be running it?
Uh, I was thinking October, does that sound right?
Sounds, I thought it wasn't that. What's their stop symbol like? I mean, we all need to know what that is. If you, you have no concerns that that could be on the first one?
Well, I know that, uh, the EMS director has been on the phone with several times to bring it on, and I think that's why he got the loader so quickly.
Okay. Is the second one, um, in dire need of getting a loader for it too? Is it, it's out, it's shot, so we need to talk to him about a better loader, so, so it won't be short, so. All right. Can any pressure be applied by others to make this happen faster?
I can see what he'd.
I was thinking Larry, don't we? He's got some bull. He's got friends, friends up close to us, and they, they're sliding on us, so. So, okay, I'm just concerned that we haven't received the first. Any further discussion? The motion is for $16,890 from Phillips Health Care to buy a second monitor. Roll call please.
Becky?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And so the agenda is request for $983 for an independent charger conditioner for the batteries for the new monitors. Um, this does reflect a 29% discount. Motion is to approve $983.
Been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
These are for monitors to, to charge, I mean, charger for the monitors, which we don't get half.
That's correct. Let's try a condition charger, I have a condition.
Yeah, we can get the charger first.
All right, well, we went through this once already, so is there any further discussion about these conditioning chargers for the new monitors from Phillips? Hearing none, roll call please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Next up on the agenda is a contract for the EMS medical director. This is a position that has not been paid in the past, is not our collection from the committee. Uh, Dr. Jeremiah Ostermeyer is EMS, uh, he is the, he is the MD or co-director, or he's, no, he's not a co-director. He is the MD in the emergency department, it's former regional. Um, he goes through the protocols and signs off on him. He's offering to do education to our staff. He will actually be onsite, uh, once a quarter, is that right, something like that?
Yes, quarterly, so he'll be on site for some of the monthly meetings.
And the requested contract fee is $4,000 a year or $333 a month. The muscle behind the reason is that it is actually incidental license that's at risk as he gives advice and consults with EMS staff. So, therefore, a request for reimbursement. Motion to approve the contract for the amount of $4,000 for the medical director, Dr. Jeremiah Ostermeyer.
Second.
Moving second in discussion? Will this be a legal document that Bill needs to go through? Is there a formal contract and all of that?
The contract has been prepared, and I wonder if it would be better if we moved to approve preparing the contract. Does that make sense?
I'm not sure, I'm looking for legal.
Well, I think as long as you approve the expenditure of up to $4,000, it would be the engine of all the contract they agreed to by, right, and by the doctor.
Do we need to modify the motion?
I don't, I don't think you do.
And the contract is written? In? Not on the signage?
Correct.
Well, what if, what if the, what if the contract comes back with different relations, difference in route line here? Like, it only shows up twice instead of four times?
Then I don't think Ray signed it.
Negotiations, we're looking at negotiations.
Okay, clarification, when you're approving the expenditure?
I think a formal contract, that's acceptable to our attorney and our state lawyer.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Roll call please.
Becky?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Any others, Betty?
None whatsoever.
Item number 10, consideration of purchase order ordinance 4903. What is your desire?
Should number nine, Bill.
I know.
Okay.
No, wait for it. Second?
Been moved in second, item number nine, purchase order 4903. Roll call please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Then there are no payroll ordinances, any others for the good of the city council?
Um, could we have a note made on the construction meeting this afternoon?
Sure. Um, met with the general contractor, well, uh, Tim, Dan, Barry, Shiger, myself, met with the, uh, general contractor, the electric sub, uh, KDOT representatives, and also the, uh, irrigation system subcontractors. While, uh, notice of proceeding has not been issued yet, waiting for, uh, two subs, two supply required paperwork, what I'm actually getting today, waiting for whatever. One of the holdups additionally is the weather. Need consecutive days of, uh, 30 degrees because of ground frost issues, um, with, it's just too cold. We're probably looking at probably, um, 10 to 14 days before, I mean, based upon current weather for extended forecast, before we have back-to-back 30-degree days. So, probably look at another 10 to 14 days before anything tans and this starts happening. One of the questions was, is the contract, we've said 70 days, is it working days or is it calendar days? It's working days in a five-day work week. Um, so we're looking at about 14 weeks, um, of construction timeframe. Looking at, um, talked about a little bit this morning at the, uh, the ad hoc get-together, look at, running a trench that would, uh, have the irrigation system and the electrical and the communication conduit systems located in that, that irrigation would be deeper. The plan, I think to date, is about four or five feet wide. Any literalist?
I'm sorry, yes.
We need to say reading.
I was at the meeting, I didn't think I needed to listen.
Um, and they would, uh, cut that section out of the sidewalk, uh, the irrigation system would, would go in, then the electrical, um, at a, at a higher elevation, backfill it, and then put, uh, AD3 rock in there to, to maintain a walking service. This way, it, it minimizes the level of disruption. They've done it in other projects, um, I'm not sure there are other issues or points that really came up.
I don't know where they're going to start yet.
They're going to start down by my building.
Yeah, with the trenching. Actually, they're going to start with the electrical and, uh, that over by the Public Works Building. Water is actually going to start over here on, uh, 100 blocks south, I think, on the west side of the street, partly because of the water main, so they can go ahead and locate that and make adjustments accordingly. Some of the things are going to have to be, um, adjusted in the field because of water service lines. We know where the main is, the depth of the main, but private service lines from the main into the buildings themselves, we don't know the depth, et cetera. Um, we will do our best to locate what we can, um, as part of that, but some are copper or some are, uh, D C, different types of material, whether there's a lead wire in there, being able to locate it, I'm not sure. Um, Tim, I think you and Lynn thought we could locate the majority of them, but there may be some that we can't locate.
And for our listening audience, this is anticipated to be a 70-day process, 70 working.
Working day, yes.
If there are water meters and pits that get disturbed, it don't matter, we're replacing the pits as we go, and the lids and stuff, is there, should be any of that going on? I know it's not scheduled, but.
It's not scheduled, I'm sure, one way or the other, yes, it will get done.
Whether the contract is ready, on the scenario you gave, if, if they're damaged due to demolition or construction, then it's the contractor's liability to replace those.
If they're, open them up and they're damaged otherwise, if they even get there, then it's, uh, the business owner.
No, we'll take care of them.
It's us.
It's us, yes.
Okay. Tree board has done their preliminary separate mound of tree inventory?
Yeah, I think we've resolved all those issues. We'll deal with it as we get into it. But I don't see a large loss of trees because of size, as was, uh, early warnings.
Okay. One last thing, or maybe the last thing on, on this subject, and that is, I think the, uh, business community remains excited about prospects of getting this school and completed. I think that was evidenced this morning with a little kickoff coffee that the businesses had, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Brett for coming to the event. That was, I, I think the excitement is there, and I think the end result will be appreciated.
I love Bob, please.
Oh, Bob, I.
Chris.
Wow.
Bob Lund and.
Bob Doll.